Good evening and welcome to the 7:30 special called meeting of the Stafford County School Board. All members are in attendance, so we do not need to have our authorization to participate electronically. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Yes ma'am, Dr. Chase.
Here.
Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Ms. Hollarback.
Here.
Ms. Randall.
Here.
Dr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. Young.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Yes, all members in attendance, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our discussion items with section number 3.01, I'm going to give just a quick introduction before we get to this, just to make sure there is, to clarify some things based on the emails that were received today. This evening, the school board will be receiving and reviewing the underlying data regarding a change to the times. This does not, this evening, the board is not looking at the swapping of high school or elementary times. I know a lot of emails that were sent to me today thought that was the topic, or could potentially be the topic of this evening's agenda. That is not the topic of this agenda. You may certainly always send us your comments on that, but I just wanted to clarify that the items that are on the agenda this evening is solely related to the review and discussion of the transportation data underlying the decision to modify the start times. So I just wanted to make sure that was clear. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Jones.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the public. This is actually the third schedule the board would have considered. Just a little review as Dr. Tari and Dr. Schutz come forward to present data. On May 11th, at the regular board meeting, we presented our initial plan for the 2021, 2022 school year. And then, at the May 18th board meeting, we revised that plan and adopted the existing schedule. And tonight, we will review data underlying the decision for the schedule that is to take effect September 27th, pending tonight's action. So, at this point, I will invite Dr. Tari and Dr. Schutz to come forward. I've shared some preliminary data with the board on arrival times, and we're going to begin with a quick review of that, and then some additional information.
Dr. Tari, before you begin, I was just going to ask board members that we allow the presenters to get through their whole presentation first, and then that everybody would, there is a pad of paper that our clerk always provides, to make sure that you have your questions ready, but I would prefer to let the presenters go straight through their presentation. All right, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to go through where we are with some initial analysis on transportation data. We are definitely in the preliminary stages of this. And you took the words out of my mouth, which I was going to ask if we could hold questions into the end, because it will kind of unfold as we go through the different pieces this evening.
Dr. Tari. You have a wonderfully light voice.
By a voice.
Yep, I was just going to ask if you could move the microphone close. Thank you.
So as we take a look at the data, I want to make clear that one of the things Dr. Schutz and I are trying to do is, we have worked with Mr. Baldwin and Mr. Fulmer to identify where areas where we can provide some immediate data analysis, some mid-range data analysis, and some more long-term data analysis. Right now, we are very much in the immediate data analysis stage, and starting to build in the levels, layers of the mid-range data analysis. So this highlights some of what we are outlining for that immediate data analysis piece. So, working with Mr. Fulmer's team, there has been the creation of a daily versus trans export, which provides a really nice breakdown of the routes on time and late, and there's an automated calculation of the percent late, which then Dr. Schutz and I have been able to pull into a weekly analysis, which you can see where we can use that to then calculate average weekly route delays, calculation of delays by intervals, and break down a data by, in specific to that, break down a data by 15-minute intervals. So that's where we are in this stage, is looking at basically our routes by 15 minutes late, 30 minutes late, 45, et cetera. The other thing we have started to delve into, but we've only just started with this, is doing a day-of-the-week analysis, where we're looking at the same day of the week, week over week over week, so you can see what it looks like on Thursday as you move through the calendar. So we're going to go into a little bit of what that has shown us so far. I do want to, from the beginning, say that there are some limitations, right, in whenever we're looking at data. First and foremost is beginning stages of analysis, okay? So we are just starting to peel back the layers of the onion. We're dealing with a relatively small data set so far. Even though we're seven weeks into school, it's still a cumulatively relatively small data set. We're currently limited to route analysis, but we are working on building capacity for additional units of analysis. I highlighted the small data set piece already. Do you want to be clear that our methodology right now in calculating late is capturing anything one minute or later from the bell ring? And that includes both in the morning and in the afternoon. So if the bus is not in the circle at the time the bell rings, it is calculated late, okay? So, just factor that in, it creates kind of a, particularly in the afternoon, almost an over-capture of tardy. The other thing I want to highlight is that this does not yet include an analysis of traveler, other specialty programs in the analysis. Those in many ways, particularly with the travel programs, are going to have to be treated as almost a separate data set with its own set of challenges to identify and analyze and piece together in the puzzle. So this shows you basically the average delays by week, with the average number of routes arriving late by morning and afternoon. And what we see in that is that there was significant improvement in the number of routes arriving late between Week 2 and Week 3 in the morning, but we have not seen another major shift since that week. So, we have not yet been able to have a significant adjustment in reducing that percentage late. This here shows that route analysis by time intervals. So, it's giving you essentially the mean length of delays over those weeks by the number of routes. So, essentially, it gives you the average number of routes per day that are 15 minutes or less late, the average number 16 to 30 minutes late, the average number 31 to 45 minutes late, 46 to 60, and over an hour. And with some context, there are approximately 600 routes for both morning and afternoon, but they do vary on a daily basis. So we do have this additionally broken down, you know, with those specific daily routes, but for context, it's approximately 600. So the next piece I'm going to get ready to show you is the beginning stages of that day-of-the-week analysis that I highlighted. So we're working first with Thursday, and then we've been doing both a bi-level analysis of Thursday, week over week, and then over the weekend, we did add to that by-school analysis, week over week. We will be building additional days into the model until you have a full set. We did not want to start with Monday or Friday, as you might imagine, those are heavy outlier days typically, if only from a traffic standpoint. Wednesday, we did not want to utilize, because we did have the weather day that one Wednesday, so since we are dealing with a relatively small number of days in the current set, that was going to throw our data quite a bit. And Tuesday, if you all recall, we had that significant thunderstorms that came through that one day, and that also significantly skewed data for that day. So that's how we arrived at starting with Thursday, and then we'll be building out from there, with Monday and Friday adding into the data set last. So, based on that day-of-the-week analysis, what I'm next going to show you is this broken down by elementary, middle, and high school. The number of routes late by 15 minutes or late, or less, and the number by 16 minutes So those are your numbers at the elementary level, at the middle school level, and at We did take a look at what the historical impact would have been of a 15-minute shift, and that would look at just if you had added 15 minutes on at the secondary level, not looking at extending from both directions. So as I show you the reduction in late routes that we would have seen with 15 minutes, we anticipate if the board does decide to adopt the schedule, you would see a compounding effect from moving both elementary up 15 minutes, as well as secondary back 15 minutes. So we anticipate there would be a compounding effect. But on the conservative side, this would be essentially what you would have seen as a minimum change to total late routes for each of those weeks, both at the middle school level and at the high school level. So in terms of next steps in transportation data analysis, as I mentioned, we're starting to get into some of the mid-range data pieces that we've outlined, as well as the long-term data analysis. One of the things we're working with schools on, and I greatly appreciate them doing this, is we're using their school-level spreadsheets, where they capture their daily bus data, to supplement our VersaTrans data, right? So VersaTrans data is based on GPS. There are obviously times when our GPS systems fail, or don't capture correctly. So the school-level data allows us to fill in any holes we may have in a VersaTrans set for a given day. We're only utilizing that when we have holes, because we also know that when we have the GPS data, that's our most accurate data. But, it's a good way for us to be able to fill in those holes. We're also trying to begin incorporating the daily data on unassigned and absentee routes into our analysis, so that we can better factor that as we're looking into the delay pieces. Building in that system to analyze those travel programs and specialty programs, and how that factors into the broader piece. Doing a full and complete breakdown of first and second elementary shifts. And then in the long term, starting to think through how to identify our routes by low, medium, and high need for quick analysis of impact when absences occur. Build out our system to improve capacity to capture student participation in different sectors, from which students are drivers to walkers to, you know, we talked a lot about increasing ability of students to bike ride. Building the ability to tie students to specific routes to better measure student level impact. Something I didn't go into great detail about before is, right now, this is very route-specific, right? And we don't currently have, at one point in time, I worked in some retail management, right? And a big part of, if you've ever worked in retail, you have a clicker over your door, right? And it counts the number of people that come into the store, and one of the things you get measured on is of that, what percentage converted to sales, right? So we don't have a good mechanism right now of quickly counting number of students on a bus. Even if we did have that infrastructure in place, it wouldn't necessarily give us a very quality it wouldn't necessarily give us a very quality picture of which students really need to be riding the bus, because we know because of the significant delays that even students that would ideally be riding the bus are currently trying to get a ride with a friend, get a ride with mom, dad, neighbor, whoever can get them to school. So even if I could provide that data right now, I don't think that data would be very telling of what the actual student level impact is. And then another piece we'd like to start to add into is build out better models related to after-school programming and how those pieces as well tie into this broader data piece. All right, and Mr. Baldwin, I think, is going to join and talk about some additional factors related on the transportation side.
Didn't know it existed, so that's good. Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Dr. Jones. Thank you, Dr. Tyree and Dr. Schultz, for helping us put this data piece together, because it is an important piece for progressing our transportation department. As we talked about the additional factors she mentioned, alternative transportation methods, short-term and temporary adjustments. With our bus driver shortage, we have begun to use some innovative ways.
Mr. Baldwin, can you get that a little closer to you? Thank you.
All right.
All of you all are very soft speakers, so I want to make sure we can hear you. Thank you.
No worries, no worries. So we want to talk about the utilization of our charter bus services and some outsourcing methods that are currently being utilized. We looked at the use of charter buses for our temporary use for our students who were lacking the bus route where they were getting late to school in different areas. And so we looked at charter buses, bus stops that have basically one stop. And these were stops going into apartment complexes, neighborhoods where we could pull the bus in safely, be off the road, load kids in a safe manner, and then transport them to school. And that was the one component that we would be doing. And so we actually started that this morning. And we used five buses to transport kids between Colonial Forge and North Stafford High School. The initial report today was everything was successful. I think the kids were a little off because we had a bus on time. And so the charter buses, we had the buses waiting for a while. We did send some messages out to parents to let them know ahead of time what we'd be expecting. I did manage to get around to most of those stops and watch the buses load and get out the car and kind of, "Come on, kids, the bus is here, let's load the bus." So that part worked. We will continue with that on a temporary level, keeping safety first and foremost. We do have a school employee on the bus. We have identified the bus, the route associated with the school. And we have rosters for our kids, still following the same guidelines where there's a mask mandate on the bus. We do have masks, so if kids do not have a mask, we give them a mask along with staff. And so that, this morning and this afternoon, seem to be successful. And whenever we can utilize this resource, we shall, with proper notification to those families of those bus routes from that standpoint. The other outsourcing that we're looking at primarily deals with our McKinney-Vento students, because a lot of these students live right now outside of the county. The two collaborating counties are supposed to work together to get kids to school, but with everyone facing this bus driver shortage, it's next to impossible. So we have to turn to alternative resources to help get kids to school. But as we are coming out of this pandemic, we're finding that those vendors are having the same issues we are having. So even though we are working with these vendors to get our kids to school, we find that they're getting to school late as well. And so we are trying to explore some of the best users, best use of our funds to make sure we get our kids to school on time. And so there are some folks that we'll be talking to this week about helping to supplement that for our students. I wanted to talk a little bit about where we are. Thanks to one of our initiatives where we wanted to change the driver scale in order to recruit more drivers in the area to come and drive for us. We were able to do that, thanks to Mr. Burnett and Mr. Fulmer for improving the driver pay scale and starting some sign-on bonuses. So we've gotten the applicants in. I mentioned that at one point in time, we'd had over 200 applications entered, and we have been reviewing and interviewing since then. As a note, last Saturday, we did a job fair and where we had 72 letters of intent for folks for employment contingent upon meeting our requirements. So we were happy about that. In the past, in July, we had about 14 and about another 20 in August to start. All of those folks have not made it through class yet. And so I wanted to share the process with you a little bit, just to get a better idea. This process is usually a four- to six-week process for someone to start training, to receive their learner's permit, to receive their CDL license, in turn be released to drive for us. And so some of the key factors in this driving training component is a background check, a CPS check, a DMV record check, a VDOE, medical, physical, and drug testing, all of which are out of our control of feedback of results when we send. And each of those has had a minor glitch in when and how soon we receive the results back. We were just notified last week about our drug testing. We were sending results in, and they were two and three weeks behind. As a result, we found out that we were using the wrong form. No fault of ourselves, it was a change made at the federal level pushed down to the drug testing agencies, who then did not push it down to us. And so we received a phone call from our agency apologizing, and they told us that they will be put in a rush. And they did. As of last week, I know I was sitting in Mr. Fulmer's office, and I started getting dings of emails, and they were the drug result testing coming through by email. So that part was something that I was really excited about, because that was a barrier that was outside of our control. So the medical, physical, the DOE physical, and the agencies that we use, everyone's had some type of COVID-type issue where there's not been enough staff. This agency went from appointments only to walk-ins, back to appointments only, and now they go and they may sit two to three hours waiting just to get a physical. And so we are constantly working, because there are multiple locations. So if this one's not working, let's go to the other one until we can do it. So those are just some examples of some factors that hold our drivers up that are outside of our control from that standpoint. The basic timeline that we're looking at, from the interview process, we offer a DMV training class. This is the class that basically discusses the DMV handbook and all of the information needed to pass the CDL learner's permit test. There are four tests that are involved with that. The next day begins the classroom instruction. So by law, we have about 24 hours of classroom instruction. That is the minimum that they can receive. We typically do more. That classroom instruction usually lasts about two weeks. Within that two weeks, we encourage all of the participants to study to take their CDL learner's permit. Again, that is four tests that they must take and pass. If they receive that, their permit, I'm running down the hallway, giving them high fives and thanking you, because that's one hurdle passed. So from the time they receive their learner's permit, we have a 14-day window before they can actually test for their CDL license. So within that 14-day window, we are now beginning the behind-the-wheel training. This is getting those folks on the bus, learning our pre-trip, learning all of the features. They get to drive the bus without students, but with a trainer to get accustomed to what it would be like riding with students. After that 14-day period, we schedule a test based on the comfort level of that individual. They pass that test. We do another high five, running down the hallways, congratulating them. Then they have to do their student driving hours. And we would do 10 hours of mainstream with students and 10 hours with special needs with students on the bus. After that, we release them, transition them into a route. So it's a process. And that, again, that process is usually four to six weeks. But as I tell, and as I've told all of our potential applicants from Saturday, that the more you put in, the more you study, the faster you can make it through the class and the faster we can get you on the road. And so it's all about the interest and the ability level and the participation and motivation of that individual for getting through our time period. So currently, this year, since July, we've given you some updates about the two drivers. So in July, we have 12 drivers that began the class. Since then, five were released, which is about 41%, 42% of our drivers who began training were released to drive. And that is just for the July class. So there are plenty of other factors. In that 12, we had some that decided to pursue other opportunities. We had some that just left us, and then others that wanted to do something different. In August, we had 16 to begin, and currently, right now, two are released to drive. Again, folks are right at the level of still studying to obtain their CDL permit. And so either they are still studying, or they've taken the test, they may have failed a portion of it, and there's a timetable that they have to wait in order to test again in order to receive their license. So we are monitoring that and helping them as much as possible to be able to garner the skills needed to pass each test. From there, it could be anything from, again, the physical, the drug testing, any of those factors that are out of our control before we can release them to drive with students. Currently, the September class, we have 28. The first class were the 10 CDL drivers that we had, that we did on Saturday. Out of that 10, right now, I listed three, but we actually have four that are driving. And we expect to get the rest. Now, while you ask, why not all 10 are ready? Again, we had to take them through the same process, physical, drug testing, all of that by county. We cannot take the results from the previous county to ours, preferably because we were not able to get those records from that standpoint. So we had to take them through that process. And so as soon as their paperwork comes in, we get them behind the wheel. And then from behind the wheel, excuse me, we get them with the student training, student driving time. And once they've satisfied that with the training, we release them or transition them into a route. So we're hoping to have the rest by this week. But again, that's a paperwork deal. I think out of that deal, we only had two of the 10 that did not start was because they were already working and they wanted to give notice before they began driving for us. And so one started this week, and we have a second person starting next week. So then we had the last class of 18 that started last Monday. And they have been going strong. This is their last week of classroom instruction. And we're hoping that these folks will be signing up to take their CDL permit test so that we can get them behind the wheel and getting more people testing for their CDL license, in turn getting them on the road as a driver. And finally, adjusting the start times will have the largest immediate impact. The remaining options will have longer timelines. All right, at this point in time, I'm going to open the floor for questions for myself or Dr. Tyree.
All right, Board Members, questions? Who wants to get us started?
How are you planning on?
I thought we'd all do two questions each, and then we'd go back, back around. I just thought we would have each Board Member have the opportunity to ask two questions. And then, then we would do another pass if we've gone through all seven Board Members.
Okay, I'll start.
All right.
One of my questions, and I am not the expert here, you are. So these are just questions. When you talk about the physicals, and have we, because I'm in the medical field, I'm in technology and in the medical field at the same time. So I know some areas that you could actually get physicals. Do we have a contract that we have to abide to go to this specific place to get the physicals?
Yes, ma'am, currently, we do have a contract, but we are actively pursuing an alternative route.
Because if they are not, if they are not following the SLAs to get you the physicals on time, you should be able to get a contract or work something out with, like, say, for example, Patient First or a doctor's office and get those physicals done, drug testing and things of that nature, LabQuest. There's so many locations that are looking for work, and I'm thinking that that's an option. And along the same lines about the physicals, I remember Mr. Sutton, when I asked the question back in May, the 11th, I believe it was the 11th, when he brought the first plan, one of my questions was that if he had enough drivers, because I think he mentioned that he was going to be out of 30 vacancies. And I read, I quote him, he said that, "I said to him, 'Per the law, we needed a seat for every child who wants a seat, to have a seat. Then we should also be planning to provide a seat on the bus for each child who needs it.' I asked what the backup plan was for ensuring that all bus routes are covered each day, given that we have 30 vacant driving positions at that time. On any given day, that would be inevitable, I said, people are going to be out, sick for whatever reason, and now with COVID, you know, that's something to take into consideration.'" How he's planning on filling this absence, and his answer was, he was going to fill the answers with individuals from the office, including himself. And so my question to you is, were these individuals, did they have CDL licenses? And so, I mean, how can you fill 30 routes? I mean, how was that feasible? And I know you're not very, Mr. Sutton's not here right now. So if you don't have the answer, you know, it's okay. Those are my two for now.
Madam Chairman, can we make sure that we get these answers in form of a memorandum or an email or something? Because I think these are very valid questions, and I'd like to hear those answers as well, if we don't have them tonight.
All right, who's next? Ms. Randall, go ahead.
So I have my questions already prepared. But how many active routes do we have? How many buses do we have available to drive? And I'm only allowed to ask two, so I'll leave it at that.
Well, the approximate number was about 600, which that really changes because of the route consolidation. We've been actively working on that. So to start the school year, it was around 600, but it will be changing, especially at the high school level.
So what did we have pre-COVID? How many routes did we have pre-COVID?
I'll definitely have to get back to you about that one, about pre-COVID.
And how many available buses do we have to actually drive?
Available buses is about 270. Currently, we have about 180 assigned buses, and that is mainstream and special needs. So we're trying to keep a assigned bus-to-spare ratio of about 20%.
For what reason?
Just so we can have buses. Our buses go down on call for. So we want to have enough of a spare fleet to be able to fill the void for buses that do break down.
So let me, I'm going to piggyback on Ms. Randall's question first. So you said that we have 600 active routes, but that that number's going to go down, and that we have 270 buses in the fleet that are available. We have 180 assigned buses.
We have 180 assigned buses. So how many bus drivers do we have?
Right now, we're tiddling around the 190 mark. Because with the 180, that is the assigned buses, both mainstream and spared. And that has been fluctuating with the new staff.
So that's allowing for possibly somebody's out for the day or something like that?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
All right. And then my other question, and maybe this is, I don't know if this is for you or for Ms. Towery. On the slide that talks about high school and how many routes were more than 16 minutes late, and it said for the AM that it was 26, and for the PM it's 95 at the high school. How many students is that?
That's what I was alluding to, and not having the ability to do, not having the ability to do a student count at present.
Well, on average, how many students do we have on a bus? I mean, if ideally, like, before COVID, about how many students would we put on a bus? Average ballpark?
So it varies at the elementary level.
But I'm just asking about high school.
Just high school?
Yep.
It was about 50, 52, 52 students.
Per bus?
Yes.
So what you're telling me is that we have 26 times 52 students arriving to school more than 16 minutes late? If they were riding the bus? I understand that their parents may have chosen to drive them, and so that they may not be on that bus.
Right. But I want you to just keep in mind that, on national average, high school has the lowest ridership. So if we were looking at 80% for elementary, 60% for middle school, maybe about 40% for high school in terms of total ridership.
Sure. I'm just trying to get a sense of how many students with our current system are actually arriving to school late in the morning. And so it's theoretically, maybe, let's just say, 25 times 50? So a lot of students showing up late. I'm just trying to get a sense of it. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Haley?
Well, this is just a comment, so don't count it as one of my questions. I had the same question, Dr. Chase, but I don't think we should talk about theoretical or hypothetical at this point because we don't know if any of those are special ed buses, which have a much smaller population. We don't know how many are on the bus. I mean, I've heard stories that buses come in with 10 students. So without data, I don't think it would be wise of us to presume this number. Now, that gives me to my question, my first question. This late by 16 minutes or more, Dr. Towery, did you say that this includes one minute or before for the morning, or one minute after the bell rings?
Right. So the late by 15 minutes or less includes anything one minute on, right? So anything from one minute to 15 minutes. And then that next block is including everything from 16 minutes on.
So hypothetically, if we reduced our instructional day by 15 minutes, speaking theoretically, on a temporary basis, if we say took 5 and 1/3 minute out of each block, or 6, would that mean that on this count, those 63 would be on time?
So you're saying five minutes at each level versus?
I'm talking about three of the four blocks in high school, not lunch. That's already short enough. But we have four blocks. And if we, and we've done this in the past, we've actually, on a temporary basis, I think we increased it actually by five or six. But if we were to hypothetically reduce the instructional block by five to six minutes, having the buses come at the same time, same pickup, same delivery, just not start the first block until 15 minutes later, would those 63 routes be on time?
So in theory, you would hopefully recapture those on-time routes.
Okay. All right. Now, the afternoon, this is my, this is a two-pronged question. The afternoon, the 95 that are late, is that 95 that are more than one minute after the bell rings?
So the 95 is more than 16 minutes or more after the bell ring. The 52 in Week 6 would be up to one minute after the bell ring. So that's why I stated in the afternoon, there really is, in many ways, when you look at it 20% in the morning, 40% in the afternoon, you know.
Sorry, I need to get back to utilizing my teacher voice. You really are, you know, overestimating in some ways if you start to factor. And this kind of gets to where we're in, that we really are in that beginning stages of analysis. Because what I'd like to start to do is be on the 15 minutes, then start to break down by, okay, now let's take a look at, where's our five-minute margin, right, in the morning and in the afternoon?
So that, just to be clear, that afternoon is counting from a minute after the bell rings? So that presumes that all the buses are scheduled to leave when the bell rings?
So it's focused on it being whether the bus is at the school poised to be able to begin departure at the time of the bus?
So all of our buses are scheduled to be first load. We don't have any second loads at the high school. I'm just trying to picture this, because I don't want to be counting something as?
It wasn't more than two questions.
Well, no, this is my same question. I'm not understanding. Okay, you know, I'm the one that's slower in some of this. This late, are we, are all our buses supposed to be leaving a minute after school ends? That, okay, I'll leave that as my question. Is that correct?
No, the target time is 10 minutes after the end of the day for the bus to leave. So if it's 3:30 for the high school, the target time would be 3:40. That'd give enough time for schools to load and buses to probably depart the school system, depart the schools.
And this is just a comment. I am very frustrated, I'm sure you are too, when I see this data, because I asked to review the data and have that available to the school board to review, the raw data. And if this is the raw data, this tells me not much. It doesn't tell me what schools are late, what routes are late, where we need help, where we need to focus. This is just general information. So this is the best we've got. Is that? I assume that's correct, because?
It's such a mess, I don't want you to know.
Well, I'm just, you know, Dr. Jones said that we would get the data tonight. And so this is it. There is no more data than this.
We don't?
Hold on, hold on one second. Go ahead.
That's a comment. I just?
Understood.
Frustrated.
We don't need any comments from the audience this evening, but the board discussed. That's why we're here this evening, is to get to the bottom of us understanding the data. Dr. Warner, I think you are next.
Yes, thank you. Oh, go ahead.
Apologies, Dr. Jones, I didn't see.
I'll go back to Dr. Towery's overview of where we are in the data analysis. So she talked that this is the beginning-level analysis of data, and she kind of laid out for the board additional data that we'll collect. And she can talk in detail about how we collect data. There's more than one data system, there's a versatile trans system that she mentioned. And there's also the data that's collected at schools in terms of when buses arrive. So I'll just reiterate what she's already shared with the board.
Ms. Haley, I will add to Dr. Jones' comments that we have just begun to do more of the school-level specific analysis in addition to the levels. That's kind of the next stage we've been going into. So we can certainly, as we get in, especially into some of the ad hoc committee work and stuff like that, we can certainly continue to share out that data as we're working on it.
And Dr. Towery, I have the utmost respect for you. You always give in very, you know, thorough presentations and analysis. I think it's the paucity of the data that makes this so frustrating for me. So this is, I know you're doing the best you can.
Dr. Warner, this time.
Thank you. Thank you, first of all, for doing all this number crunching. And I realize this is preliminary data, because, I mean, one of my big questions is, we know the buses are late, but what are the reasons the buses are late? I mean, is it because there was no driver assigned? Is it because traffic congestion? Is it because kids weren't at the bus stop when they needed to be? I mean, there's a whole, there's a whole volumes of data that are lacking from this that make it really difficult. I noticed that the afternoon runs are much more, there's much more drag there, obviously, 40%. Is this due to traffic problems, or is it because the buses aren't in the right place at the right time?
Well, right now, it is a lot to do with not having an assigned driver. Assigned drivers having to do doubles, and then time and distance of routes. So if in the afternoon, I use the prime example, the elementary first shift schools. Those are some of the longer routes. So we can get them to school on time in the morning and start a second tier. But you may not be able to do that exact same format in the afternoon because the route from the first shift elementary is so long, they can't get back in time enough to do a second-tier elementary. So the plan would be get them back for whatever next tier, whether it's a middle school or a high school. But because of our shortage, we can't do that. And so if I don't have enough drivers to compensate for the second-tier elementary, then kids have to wait, or we double back with buses with shorter runs and come back. So when you double back for an elementary, then if that bus is assigned to middle school, you're going to run later. And then they do their middle school, it's going to run later, the high school will run later.
So that brings me to my next question, my second question. How many unassigned routes do we currently have?
Unassigned routes for the high school, at one point in time, we had about 60. But now that has been reduced. I can't give you the exact number because it seems like every week we change because of consolidation. But that is a number that I can get to you, hopefully, this week.
That's fine. Thank you. But we are getting, just can I do a quick follow-up? But we are getting more drivers online, and these unassigned routes are reducing, and we're consolidating routes.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That's the piece. If we can't assign them to a regular driver or a new driver, then we're looking at how we can condense it and combine it with another run. And that's primarily what we're looking at the high school level.
Dr. Warner, just for clarification, was your comment about the unassigned drivers just for high school or in general?
It was in general. I'd like to know how many unassigned routes are all across them.
Nope, I know you're next. Just hold. Hollerback.
The, I guess one of the biggest issues that I'm having with all of this, and I said that the very first time we started talking about this, was about communication. So what I'd like to know is, what have we done up to this point to improve our communications to our parents, to our staff, to the school board? What's been implemented to improve that process?
Well, we're still working the initial process, where as far as the communication between our transportation department and our schools of being able to see what buses are going to be late, what buses will not have a driver, consists of a live document that's shared. So every morning, those schools can look and see. Sometimes we talk about the time, we have a time set where elementary routes can be seen and their status, whether there's no driver, or we have a driver, but it's going to run late. From the elementary, middle, and high, we have established times when schools can look at that and make their decisions. Based on a variety of things, from the number of drivers that may call out or to any incidents that may occur, we try to make that time as much as possible. But we work to get the live document in place. So that becomes the two-way communication that we have to see what our picture looks like each day. From that, we still send our phone messages about our buses, whether there's no driver, whether the bus is late, if there is an incident. And whatever that case may be, we're still working to send communication to let folks know what's going on. In terms of, I'm sorry.
Do we have GPS tracking on all of our buses, so we know at any one point in time, we know where they're at?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Are we utilizing that as a tool?
Yes, ma'am. We do. If buses are, we use that religiously. Of course, it's equipment. And so sometimes that equipment goes bad, and sometimes we can't read. And we find that out, and we can put it into the shop to get it fixed. But we have to keep up on it. We do use our override system. This is when, whenever we can substitute a bus. If a bus is down, or the driver is out, and we have to get another driver to cover, we are able to substitute that route with a sub bus. And for everyone that has access to the MyStop app or E-Link, they can be able to see that, as well as our schools. They look and can pull up the information from the E-Link, from on-screen, and see those changes that we are making daily. And some of those changes that we make daily are up to 150 to 200 changes based on the routing and what the need for coverage is on that day.
Thank you.
All right. So it is my understanding that we had contracted with a third-party vendor, and I apologize, I cannot remember, I think it began with T, and I'm sorry not to have all my notes in front of me. What is the purpose of that? What is their job going to be? I know there was a third-party vendor that was added, and?
Transponder.
I knew it was a T. Hey, I'm better than I thought. Tell me when they started their work and what is the scope of their work?
All right. So Transponder is a routing company. And what we wanted to do is get an assessment of our routes. So they are actually doing a route efficiency study. So we started this, we met with them last week. We talked about some of our goals of being able to look at our routes and give us some opportunities where our strengths were, and some opportunities where our weaknesses were, where we can improve. And so what that involves is giving them a file with all of our routes. So we've included our mainstream, our special needs, our travel students, CGS, Head Start, Pre-K. Everything that we transport, we've given it to them in a file. They're going to analyze it and give it back to us. And share with us what are the strengths and the opportunities for improvement within this route efficiency that we have.
Do you have an idea of, you knew that was the follow-up, when we might expect some even, well, preliminary or really?
At the latest, four weeks.
All right. I still think that was part of my question, so I'm going to go just to add one more. Well, no, I do think that was all part of the same question.
That's what we lawyers do. We ask more.
For me, and I think many of the board members expressed, and I think Dr. Warner used expressed it the best, it's the why. Like, these percentages mean something, but do they mean? For me, I represent a district that has a lot of challenges, and I can go through why that is. When I look at the percentages of late, I'm very curious, is Hartwood District 50% of it? 60%? 70%? Or 5%? And I'm sure each board member looks at that number, and they think, Acquahia, Garrett. How do we get to that? Because to me, that's where we start to identify, here's the problem. I don't want to call my, any area a problem. Here is where we are very challenged. How do we narrow in on that? Because if 22%, using one of the figures, if 80% of that 22% is in one area, my concern is, do I make a broad change to fix an 80% of a 20%? And I'm out of math problem. So I don't know if you have any reaction, but I will tell you, that's my concern with looking at it aggregate, although I understand why it's presented that way. I hope we don't miss an obvious. Does that make sense?
It does. It does. And my team and I? And, and my team and I, I've asked those questions. And looking at the area, those are relevant questions. What I can tell you just on a general scope, it deals with the time and distance of the route and the location of our students. And so being able to fill that void and have sufficient efficiency where we want to have as many kids on the bus planned as possible and still get that bus to and from school in a timely manner. Whether that's thirty minutes, forty-five minutes, sixty minutes, whatever that set time it is, we want to work to get them there. So that depends on the time and the distance and location of students. From there, that's where we can actually build the number of routes that are needed. Just, you know, we look at this schedule and what the understanding was, a number of drivers needed to make this schedule work. We don't have that number. And right now, in order to get kids to school within this time allotted, we basically would have to split routes. That means we double drivers, we need extra drivers. We don't have that. So anything that we may do to extend that time will help our arrival time. It's not going to be the single most solution, but it's a major step. And I think what this data has shown is that we're late. But the buses that are in that fifteen minutes, the number of buses that are in that fifteen minutes would theoretically be on time if there was some type of shift to this schedule. We would see a change. But in working with the consolidation, in working with hiring new drivers, we would see more of a change. It's just, it's going to be a longer time to see that change. And that's, that's the grasp of where we are right now. I think everybody wants to have our kids to school, I know I do. But looking at what's available, we have given you the components of what it takes. And we have made some drastic changes in order to eliminate some of those barriers to make those changes. This is just another part of that change.
So that is a component that could be coming into as you continue to build this database?
Yeah, so one of the things, and I kind of alluded to it earlier, but I know I didn't go into significant depth, but one of the things we just can see as we're looking at it is, you know, significant day-to-day variation. You know, Mr. Baldwin, as Dr. Schutz and I have met with him and kind of gotten more background on some of this. You know, he's explained the impact of, you know, for example, when a bus driver can't come to work on, on a given day, sometimes that impact is very small if it's a smaller route. But if it's one of our more rural routes, it can have tremendous impact. And that's some of what we're seeing in, as we are diving into the school-by-school analysis, is you might have a school that, you know, three out of the five days, they're fine, but you can almost immediately see where you probably had some bus drivers that couldn't make it on that given day because all of a sudden they shoot to, you know, the top of schools in their degree of lightness. All right, I'll add to that, that our, our goal is to really start to get to where we can do some regression analysis and working with, I know we're going to, Dr. Schutz and I are going to sit down with the consultant from Transponder tomorrow so that we can better understand which factors we would need to incorporate in that.
Thank you. Ms. Young, I think you're first.
Okay.
Round two.
We're next, we're round two. So this is a comment before my question, following Ms. Healy's way of asking questions. So I know teachers, when.
Okay, so I know teachers, when absent or sick or quarantined during COVID, they have substitutes. And I'm assuming that the bus drivers don't have substitutes. And so when we ask why, that could be one factor right there. But, so if they're quarantining and they, they have that issue, that means that we're missing those bus drivers. Do, are we currently doing a three feet or six feet on the buses at all?
We're, we're applicable.
I'm sorry?
Where applicable, we use the three-foot distance.
So that's another factor right there. So I know, second question. I know why I proposed a stagger time between Winding Creek and Park Ridge is because, you know, parents came to me, had conversations with me, I had conversations with the principals. Principals had conversation with Dr. Kizner at that time and we came up with a pilot program to stagger the times because they were in the same visionary and they were going to the same school. You know, they swapped school. And so why do we have stagger times for the other elementary schools? And I don't know which schools they are. And is there a way that we could not have those stagger times and somehow decrease some of the instruction time to facilitate that fifteen minutes that you were asking for on this new schedule? Is that a lot? Do you want me to repeat my questions?
You want us not to look at the stag, you want us to look at not staggering?
Yeah, because right now we're staggering more than, than Park Ridge and Winding Creek.
The two, the shifts, the two shifts.
So why do we have two shifts? This is your time. I've given you many times opportunity to speak and I want you to tell us exactly why, right?
Right, so the two shifts were as a result to better utilize drivers or use less drivers is what it was proposed to you before, right? So that's my understanding is that it would allow less, to use less drivers. So you would not have to use all of your drivers on one tier. So if you split it, then you could split the drivers and still get the kids or, excuse me, I think it was to eliminate the doubles from that standpoint.
Okay, is it working? Because I know it was working for the two schools that are close to each other. Is it working for the other elementary schools? Have that been looked at? Has it been evaluated? Because this is post-COVID.
Right, so that is something, Ms. Young, that I'm thinking, that is what we're going to ask our, the consultant to work on, the vendor, to make a better determination if that's something that's working well for us. Because right now, you can't, we can't do that based upon the driver shortage.
That doesn't show a, oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's not broken.
It doesn't, that's on our, it's literally top of our next item to-do list is to split that out and see, you know, we have a hunch that the bulk of our delay is happening at the second run with some exceptions.
This is great, this is, this is great information, but one of the things that I wanted to see is exactly which, which school, you know, like which specific school and which route. And so I guess that's your next analysis, right?
Yeah, the data doesn't point to it, but three of the non-second shift schools have had particularly, particular difficulty in the AM route. That's Kate Waller Barrett, Anthony Burns.
I'm concerned, I'm concerned.
And I don't remember the third one, Ms. Healy's here or not, but those two in particular has had significant problems with the AM runs. Rocky, Rocky Run is the other. And I, and I, and again, I don't, the, the transportation audit, just as a reminder, the transportation audit that the board saw recommended four shifts with forty-five minutes between each tier. So that was part of the original, original study in terms of the operational efficiency of buses. So that answers, answers part of that question.
Did I have two questions already?
Yes. I guess you did.
Ms. Young?
Yes ma'am.
Would you mind if we address this recommendation? Because I think Ms. Randall brought that report with her and that's not what I read in the report, so I just want.
My question?
What, it, it has to do with the, the four tiers. I, before we, we lose it, if you don't mind if.
No, not at all, go ahead.
Just ask Ms. Randall to, to cite that report. Because it's just been told to us that the report recommended four tiers.
In the decision report, the staff received the port, reports on March of 2020. Of course, we shut down schools. School board received it and you can watch the October thirteenth, 2020, transportation study review with the board. On page four of the decision document, halfway down the page, it says, "Decision Authority and Timeline." And the first sentence says, "School Board Action Is Required To Determine Whether Bell Times Should Change." Well, that didn't happen. School did not, the school board did not decide that. There was zero, we were included in conversations, but it was definitely not a vote. An assessment should have been, quote, "completed prior to November 2020 and any bell time changes finalized prior to January 2021 to facilitate proper implementation planning for the start of the school in August 2021." That didn't happen. We were given information in May and told that it had been worked on for months and months, but that was not shared any timeline with the board. But on page twenty-one of the transportation assessment, "Creating A Fourth Tier For Elementary School," and in italics, it says, "Might Help." It also says, "Flipping High School And Elementary School To Achieve Later Start For High School Students Would Be Entirely Feasible Except For The Heavy Other Demands On Tier One And Two." So there was some mention of the forty-five minute to flatten out the peaks for efficiency, or yes, for efficiency, but it was not to throw everything in at one time and have a year start like this. That's not what this study said.
All right, Ms. Randall, you are next for your questions. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
Well, Ms. Warner, I'm, I'm going to be fair, that was my question, you added to it. I'll just take the opportunity then to, yeah, sure. I'll just take the temp, the opportunity then to go back and ask, in terms of instruction time and the second tier, I think you already, I already asked that. So that's something that you are going to look into and figure out if, if it's feasible. I think I, like I said, you all are, you know, the, the experts here, so I'm going to leave it up to you all. My comment, and when you mentioned about the, the large charter buses, that's great. I want to make sure that one of the constituents came to me and said that they didn't know that, that bus. So I'm saying that, I'm hoping that there's communication there, why these big buses are coming and that maybe they have some kind of sticker or something that said CSPS that you could peel off and put back on so they know it's, it's us coming to pick up their kids. And then maybe have a boot camp for CDL or something like that so that they don't fail because we want them to come on board. But that's, that's for me, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Randall, you are next.
So my question is on drivers as far as need, want, have. How many do we need to keep our routes on time? How many drivers are we trying to fill? And how many drivers do we currently have? So need, want, have.
That was my question.
Fifty?
Fifty?
Fifty? This is excluding staff.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Excluding the staff.
Excluding the staff.
So is that FTE's total two fifty or?
Yes, total two fifty. Right now, what was my vacant, my vacancy, my FTE. So that is the number that we are utilizing. Because with that number, I can assign and have a sub pool ready to go.
How many we have in the pipeline?
Right now, in the pipeline, we have fifty-six. And these are folks who have began our class between July and September. And plus, hopefully this seventy-two that we sign letters of intent on Saturday.
So my second question is, so the current plan, or the plan that is being suggested, of course, elongates our day for the drivers and that cuts into their ability to do some training because they're going longer in the day. But what is our current daily runs per bus? And I guess utilization rate at this point, we're not going to know, but what it, because I'm hearing even elementary school have like ten riders. And usually, I'm thinking elementary school buses are quite full, high school less. But I'm even hearing that elementary schools are running with ten. So I'm just wondering, how many runs per day or per, per bus are we doing?
So on average, we assigned an elementary, a middle and a high. So that's three times two, six per day, morning and afternoon. Certain instances, a driver may have eight, where they may have two elementaries, a middle and a high. Or they may have two high schools and that. So anywhere between six to ten runs. Because sometimes with our special needs, they can take extras. And then sometimes with our elementary buses, where the runs are short enough, they can take sometimes three loads and get them back, drop them off. And then you pair that with a middle and a high. Again, that's not the ideal situation because I'll talk about the time and distance again. We're having folks that would not normally have, say, a second elementary because of the distance and the time it takes to do their first elementary school. Where usually, we would have them come back to a middle or a high school, depending on what time they finish. But because of our need, we are having them come back and do an elementary and a middle and a high. With a sufficient number of drivers, we would not have to do that.
Thank you.
Dr. Chase, I believe you're up next.
I just, you know, was looking through the, the same document that, that Ms. Randall was looking through. And I, I think, you know, it, it sort of says, you know, deciding what the priorities are to be must be a policy decision. But it says bell times need to change if service quality and effectiveness is to be a priority. And adding buses and drivers is not feasible. So, I mean, all over the country, we're having problems getting enough bus drivers. It's not, this, and, and remember, this study was done before COVID and, and it's gotten worse with, you know, our competitor coming up on Centerport Parkway and things like that. It's going to become more difficult for us to get bus drivers. And then if we go down to, to page, let me see here, eighteen, it says, "An efficient but not entirely effective three-tier system by design, a roughly equal forty-five-minute separation between tiers and equal instructional day length across grade levels is a strong starting point." Now, that says three tiers and we've got four tiers. So it, it might be that, that it doesn't necessarily, the study isn't necessarily saying that we need forty-five minutes between each of the four tiers, but maybe you definitely do between middle and high, I'm not sure. Anyway, just, just sort of pointing that out. And I don't really have any questions, thank you.
I wasn't ready, sorry. Ms. Healy, you are next. Sorry, I have my checklist.
So how are you assigning the new drivers if we don't know where we need them the most? You know, where the, where the latest buses are?
Well, we have the unassigned routes. And understandably, we do have an idea of the schools that we need to focus on. And primarily with the high schools and the middle schools and then working to fill the voids of those elementary schools that we're missing. So we do have a, a priority list that we're working on. In addition to assigning those drivers, we're also looking at how we can condense or consolidate as well so that when we put that driver on that run, we know it's going to be most efficient already.
My other question goes back to this, this proposed schedule and, and I'm going to call it the pre-COVID schedule. If I've, if these times aren't right, please correct me. But my recollection is that high school used to start at seven forty-five. That, so may I know, is that correct?
I have seven forty.
Seven forty, okay, so high school used to start at seven forty and elementary started at nine. Under this proposed change, elementary is actually starting an hour and a half earlier. But high school is starting two hours and five minutes later. Is that, am I missing something here?
No, but I think.
No, but even adding a tier, I mean, it's just, I don't understand how we can, you know, even flipping the schedules, which that's a discussion for another day. There's a big difference between the first start, school starting, 7:30. So it's actually earlier than high schools used to start, right? Because high schools used to start at 7:40. So this would propose the elementary start 10 minutes earlier than high school used to start, but yet high school is starting two hours and five minutes later. Where is this time in between? I mean, that seems more than the 45 minutes. And I'm not even going to concede on the tier two because we didn't have a tier two back then. We had some pilot programs between, as Ms. Young said, two very, you know, closely located, co-located schools. And, you know, that was a pilot program. And then I think two other schools joined in. So now, all of a sudden, we've got a whole new tier throwing an extra 45 minutes of, quote, you know, recommended separation, you know, between these routes. But that's a, that's a big difference. Over two hours after the first school starts that we would start our last school. And that's part of the problem that I see, is we wouldn't get out so late if we didn't start so late. So how do we, how do we come up with this 9:45 versus 7:30? Do you want?
I want to, I want to just. I just want to remind you of another data point. And I think Mr. Baldwin can correct me if we're wrong, but I believe pre-COVID, we had 16,000 students riding buses. I think now we have 18,000 students riding buses, which is a factor in the time.
Well, we're not going to change our schedule every time we add students. When I first came on the board, we were adding 1,000 students a year. And we did not change bus schedules. We bought more buses and we got more drivers. But just the fact that we have new students doesn't mean we need to extend the day, I would not expect.
You have more students, fewer drivers, more routes. That's what's driving the time back.
So is that the answer? Okay. And it would be helpful for me to see historically, you know, how many drivers we had pre-COVID, how many we have now, and if you want to put in the number of routes as well. You know, we're talking about this shortage of drivers. I know there's a shortage of drivers, but I cannot remember one time in the past when there wasn't a shortage of drivers. It may be more acute now, but, you know, it would be good to know, you know, where we are. Because when Mr. Sudditt was here introducing you, Mr. Baldwin, you know, he, I talked to him, I'm like, are we going to be okay? And he said, oh, yeah, we're, you know, we'll have this. So you came in and inherited the situation, but I don't know. I mean, I'm, again, I want to see the data. I want to see the data. And I haven't had any access to data. I mean, this is it. This is the data that we're making recommendations on. Okay, that's all.
That's all? Dr. Warner?
Thank you. I just, I just have one quick question, and it's not related to necessarily the data. One of the problems I noticed when I was out at fleet services is you don't really have adequate parking. It's in the southern part of the county. I don't know if you have a location for buses and transportation services anywhere in the north. Is this lack of resources contributing to part of our problems? We don't have buses in the right place at the right time?
Partly, yes. But primarily for maintenance reasons and support. We do have locations at schools where we do park our buses, but there's no place to maintain the buses mechanically. And so buses have to come all the way down to the southern site to be fixed, or we are contracting the work out to be done. So having a location, a remote location in the northern end of the county would be very beneficial to maintaining our efficiency.
And we've consolidated, and I'll ask one more question. So we've consolidated routes because, in part, because we have a driver shortage. If we get adequate numbers of drivers, are we going to split some of those routes back out to make them shorter?
Yes, ma'am, we can. Part of the consolidation means that the routes will run longer because we're adding kids in. We're anticipating that we will kind of drop back to the numbers that we've had in the past in terms of who we transport. But because we've had to do the planning, we have to plan for all students and then monitor the actual count. And that's kind of what we've been doing for the high school. So if that occurs, we'll be in a situation where we can possibly split a run because we would have the actual number of kids riding now. And that makes it a little bit more efficient in doing those things.
Thank you.
Ms. Hollerback?
Thank you. So historically, when there was a big policy change coming up on any number of issues, we had one just two years ago that was pretty significant. Historically, we have reached out to the superintendent's parent advisory committee for input. We've gone to the SDA for their input. Have we talked to anyone? Did anybody ask the bus drivers if they were okay with any of these changes in addition to some of the parents? That, I mean, to be honest with you, I've not received not a single email in support of a mid-year schedule change. Even when kids are not being picked up, this is creating a huge havoc on the private lives of parents, of our bus drivers, our teachers now that have to stay even later. Has anybody been consulted about this other than folks in central office? That's my question.
From this deal. I can't answer that one, just because I'm not privy to all of the advisory councils. So whether or not staff has made that comment or shared that with the advisory groups, I'm not sure. We've talked about it amongst ourselves within our transportation department to figure out if this piece would work from that standpoint. But as far as the outlying advisory groups and that committee and that standpoint, I would not be able to speak on that one. Yeah, those groups have not met this year. But this decision was mostly made on data, the data that you've been presenting tonight.
Who's next?
Me.
Okay, go.
Sure. Yeah, so, you know, this is a question I got from listening to Ms. Healy's question, and it's just, and you may not know the answer to this, Mr. Baldwin, because you were not here, but pre-COVID, were our buses actually, like, how timely were our buses before COVID? I know that I had heard stories of elementary schools where students were not getting home until 5:45, when school was getting out at 3:15. So I wonder, and this is just a curiosity for me, and I don't know whether you can answer it or not. You know, when a change happens, it's often when we find out what we're not doing well. Whereas before, we might not have been doing it well either, but people were just used to it, and so they weren't letting us know that there was a problem. So, and on the other hand, maybe there was no problem with transportation a year and a half ago with, or two years ago with respect to transportation. So I don't know if anybody has any input on that, but just wondering, were we getting students to school on time most of the time before COVID?
Well, I can't tell about the arrival times, but we had talked about the buses' clear time. Every day, we sent an email to let us know what time the last bus cleared. And so for the past two weeks, we've been averaging somewhere between that 5:20, 5:40 timeframe. And so I think I'll share some data back from the 2018, 2019 school year, when elementary was on that last tier, with those same bus clear times between that 5:20, 5:40 timeframe. And so I'm assuming that was on the old tier, the three-tiered system, with elementary being last, and with the buses clearing rate around that 5:30 timeframe. So that is relevant, similar to what the timeframe that we have right now.
Yeah, I was partly curious. I had a breakfast buddy two years ago, and she never got to school until 45 minutes after the day started. I would go wait to have breakfast with her, and her bus got her there 45 minutes late every time I was at the school. So I'm just, it's just a question of, is this really the result in the change of schedule, or is this the result of a systemic problem, and we have somehow missed it? So thank you.
One part comment regarding that was the creation of something called double bus runs, which became the word I never liked to hear. And that's where, as we're saying, they creeped into transportation, in my opinion. And several schools that I work with had these double bus runs. And I understand that perhaps the thinking was, is we were going to be eliminating, we've talked about eliminating double bus runs for at least four or five years. I can tell you, because I've had your predecessor and others stand in front of me to talk about that. It seems that the way to try and eliminate these bus runs was to create this staggered time, as alluded to and talked about by Ms. Young. So is my understanding correct that in the morning, first thing, the bus drivers that go the first run, they do not do the second tier of elementary school? Is that correct?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. We do have first tier doing second-tier elementary runs.
Which I think is exactly what our problem was with the double runs a year ago. So I'm not certain we have, to me, you would throw, not throw, sorry, bus drivers, you would put as much of your staff on the road as early as possible to start moving, with the expectation that there may be certain schools pulled out, as Ms. Young indicated some, that there was a unique transport, you know, need. I feel like we have almost institutionalized, to me, the double bus runs, which to me was always something we were working to eliminate. And so I guess that's more of a comment, but it is also from experience. I would ask that this consultant that we are talking to reexamine, as I believe really Ms. Young had really highlighted about that second group. Do there need to be that many schools in that second elementary run? Because I think, look, I am not the expert, however, I just think that is something critical that they need to look at to make sure either the right ones are selected, or do we have too many? Because when we're going back to this 45 minutes, perhaps we can be moving it the other way. So I think that's my comment. I would say to the, we did have our budget books tonight. I did look up. Our bus driver number in our bus, in our book, is 220 was the, were the last two years for 19 and 20. In this year's book, it was, I think, 225.2 or something. So I don't, I'm not going to ask about the, the .2 bus driver. I'd like to get the full bus driver. So I think as a comment in general, some of the numbers we were told early in the year were, we need 200 bus drivers. But we've already, essentially, we hope, budgeted for the 225. So you're asking for really another 35? Okay, my math's not great. Another 25 bus drivers going forward. I assume with our salary lapse and other, we will be able to do that. But I do want to say to the board, this is then the number, I hope, that we will go forward with. Buses. I know every year, and I ask the same question, people hate it, we replace buses, but we don't buy new buses. Do we need new buses?
Yes, ma'am.
How many?
We're going to need, I would tell you, the same number of my FTEs, 50. Because as we build this driver pool, I need to maintain a spare-to-assigned ratio of at least 20% or greater. And so adding these folks additionally to our staff will cause us the need to have more buses and have the buses ready and available. We are developing a replacement cycle for our school buses, where we can share X number of buses that we're going to need every year. And because we want to get the rate of return out of our buses for up to 15 years, 250,000 miles. And by that time, we want to rotate a bus out, and we want to have a bus coming in. And so we want to be able to create this plan for you, and it be a constant that should not matter from year to year. We want this to be a standing number of buses that we would need from year to year.
Will that be able to be developed for this year's budget cycle?
We will work very hard to make sure it's in place.
Was that a yes? I'm sorry.
Yes.
All right.
I have one more.
Round three.
Okay.
Ms. Young.
So following up on, we're talking about how did we get here? And I'm hearing different things. We have a lot of unplanned growth in Stafford County. We have an increased population of students, about 2,000, resulting in overcrowding in our schools. We have more students than our schools can support because of the sudden growth that the board of supervisors should be trending and building schools for as we reach capacity. This transportation problem is not a Stafford problem. It's a national problem. But we have factors that made it worse. We just talked about a few. We talked about COVID, bus drivers having to quarantine. We talked about needing that three to six feet distance sometimes. And we talked about these double runs that we have to make. The traffic congestion delays the buses from transporting our students. Furthermore, not having enough neighborhood schools and building large buildings to house more students, causing longer travel runs for bus drivers. These events do not show leadership and smart growth, or knowing that we need an infrastructure plan. Instead, it made our transportation problem worse. Board of Supervisors allowing this to happen and should be providing more funds to handle the growth. So we have Board of Supervisors helping us or not, but how are they helping us? We have, we are the largest employer behind GEICO, yet we're having trouble finding bus drivers. Instead, we are competing with Amazon, UPS, and DHL salaries. Now, on May 18th, I noted to you all, right here, that we had padding in the daily schedule for bus turnaround time. I know some on this board wanted to condense the schedule, and you all bent to the pressure. And here you are, right now, I could say I told you so, but I'm not going to. But we hear, and I'm saying. But we're here and I'm saying, you know, I'm not the expert, but I did not need a transportation study to tell you that this was going to happen. So I expressed concern then. And I'm trusting that you all are giving me the true reason why we're here today. And I named a couple of the things that I think have caused us to be here today. I'm not going to micromanage this team. We may have to relook these hours next year, but students need to be in school, period, end of story. You can debate who needs to be first, who needs to be second, who is last. If we do not have enough bus drivers, we are not going to solve the problem. So I just want us to leave the politics out of it and the emotions. And let our decision be what is best for our students and what is best resolution to solve the problem.
No questions. All right, let me go through my list. Ms. Randall.
Okay, I still have questions. So you mentioned that you brought in charter buses. And I was wondering, are we using the charter buses to transport elementary, middle, high school students as a bus stop to a school and also to transport CTEs, all of them, some of them? Or CTEs, CGS, whatever? So I'm just curious, how many are we using? And are they using it at all levels or just for a particular thing?
Right now, we're just using it at two levels. The middle school, athletics, and high school. And some of our CTE travel routes. We've tried to look at the routes that have the highest number of students going to schools, since we are using the charter buses and they're the 55 passengers. So we want to get the most bang out of that. And so we're using, we're using two of those buses to take travel students between two schools, as well as five buses to pick up one-stop shops, where we have up to 45 students or more at one stop.
And then, I'm sorry. Also, are these drivers actually vetted by Stafford County Public School? I mean, I know they have their CDLs, but you were explaining how hiring new CDL drivers, they couldn't be immediate drivers because they had to go through our screening processes, their physical, all of those things. And is anyone checking to make sure that they didn't just drive a whole run the night before and now not enough sleep and they're driving for us?
Right.
And I know you said you had a Stafford County school member. I don't know what kind of member it is. I don't know if it's whatever, but I'm just curious as to how that works.
So the charter bus companies have already been vetted by Stafford County Public Schools and the procurement office. So they already had to meet the base criteria, which handles the background checks. So the drivers, turning in driver logs, they have to vet it. All of this information has already been done under procurement status. So we have already used, if the company that we're using, they've already been vetted by our procurement staff for all of those measures.
Dr. Chase.
So I noticed that there are a number of principals in the room and I was just curious if they could share. I understand there's sort of specific data in terms of numbers, but in terms of how this is affecting the day-to-day operation of the school from the person who's actually running the school building, could you give us any insights?
Good evening. As far as the building impact, I will talk about North Stafford. We have, looking at the data here, we have seen some delays greater. Our morning, this morning, we had, I believe it was eight of our almost 30 buses were there previous to 9:20. So the remaining buses were after that point. A considerable number of the students, even with the later start time, haven't eaten. So almost a continuous breakfast line. So it's not always as fluid as get off the bus and go to first block. Got to make sure they're fed and we move them as quickly as we possibly can. So it has had a significant impact on instructional time. It has had an impact really across the board. Teachers across North Stafford are being incredibly flexible. We are going to ensure that we get kids caught up and students are not going to fail due to circumstances beyond their control, but it is, it is difficult. There is nothing that, I think we learned this through COVID, there's nothing that can replace the classroom instruction and being in there with your certified educator, being able to speak with them every day, engage with them, learn. And so that is, the instructional time is irreplaceable. So that's a snapshot from one building. And that would, that's pretty much true for just about every school day this year. And that has been, as Mr. Baldwin presented, we saw an improvement from the first week to the second week. So this has, what I just described to you is the improved arrival times that we have seen at North Stafford. So I'll defer to my colleagues.
Good evening, Madam Chair and School Board. My name is Alan Hicks, Principal at Stafford High School. And very similar to Dr. Hornick, I'm seeing the same trends in the South as he sees in the North. I will say with numbers, we are seeing 400 to 550 students late in the morning. And what that means is similar to what Dr. Hornick stated. Even if a bus arrives two to three minutes late, those students have to get in the building. We have to get those students to class. Those students have to get something to eat. So you'll see, if you stop by Stafford High School in the morning, you would see all the administrators. We have one administrator that is outside during the whole first block, pretty much, working with buses. And you'll see the rest of us doing our best to get students in class on time. And I'll echo what Dr. Hornick said about our staff members and teachers. They're being very flexible, doing the best they can as they always do. But again, we have a heavy CTE program at Stafford High School, which is very hands-on. And they have done everything in their power to do what they can to make sure students get the proper hands-on instruction, but it's very difficult when they're late, especially in, for example, culinary class. I was in there last week. The instructor does everything he can do to get those students to have hands-on activities and even rearranges and differentiates the instruction within the lesson. So what you're hearing from Dr. Hornick in the north end of the county is similar to what you're seeing in the south end of the county as well. Thanks for your time.
I'm Scott Olchenko, the Principal at Stafford Middle School. And I want to echo similarly to my colleagues. One of the things that I think we always have to remember is the equity issue within this as well. So we have a lot of students at Stafford Middle School that qualify for free and reduced lunch. And we're very concerned about what the past year and a half has looked like and the impacts COVID have had. And so I counted up before coming to this meeting that just in this month alone, we've had 59 instances where buses have arrived after nine o'clock. And so that impact is very significant when you're talking about several hundred students that are getting there after our 8:45 start time. And that greatly impacts all students' ability to participate in their entire first block. So we've gone ahead and tried to make some internal schedule changes by moving a flex period before our first block to try to minimize the loss of instruction. So that way, it would be lost during more of an enrichment time period of the day. So that's a very challenging thing to do, especially at the middle and high level, where we share some teachers with high school, with our work language teachers. So that is definitely an impact. I would say teachers are frustrated with students getting there late. I would also say it has also impacted our ability to just set up some of the basic routines and procedures that you want kids knowing what happens when you get to school. And so this morning, I had to pretty much negate a practice we put in place, which is making sure every kid has a pass because I had about three buses that had over 55 students each get dropped off about the same time at 9:15. And that is just too many students to allow to come in at any one point to give them a pass so they can get to class on time because the line was coming down my sidewalk and I just had to get them in class. I didn't want them to be 10 minutes later, just forgetting a pass. We know they're late. We'll get them to where they needed to be. So we do have consistently four second-load buses every day that are late. A frustration point for us has also been why, when you look at the staggered start times of elementary, middle, and high school, why there are also runs that happen at the high school level before, you know, we finished with all of our middle school students as well. Just because our kids get there first, we think they should also go home first. But yet, that doesn't happen in all situations. So we're also trying to look for some relief at that level because then obviously it requires staff to stay longer, you know, than they had planned. So that's what I'd like to add.
Good evening. My name is Eric Underhill. I am the new Principal at Shirley High Middle School and thank you for having us this evening. I echo the same sentiments that my colleagues have expressed and also share in the equity issue that we have within the Shirley High Boundary. We do have an expansive population and we also have many buses that are doing double runs. And we've had some buses that have not been covered. And so working with our transportation personnel, sometimes those buses get to school 30 minutes late. And so we've been accounting for that by making sure that our teachers are recording their lessons. We're having a grab-and-go option for breakfast so the kids can take their breakfast, go right to class. Teachers are being incredibly flexible at the beginning of the day, during the day, and after school as well. And so we see that on both ends. We see that on the late coming in on some of the buses. We also see that on the delay of buses going home. And so we do have a significant number of our students that are waiting till 4:00, 4:30 for a bus to go home. And so to give you about a round number for last week, we had 35 routes last week that arrived to school anytime after nine o'clock. And I will be very positive and say that that number is shrinking every week. We were at 9:15 as an average. We're now about 9:05 as an average. And so that is all progress, but it is still impacting instruction. It is still impacting our students' ability to get that face-to-face instruction with their teachers and what they're learning and how they're going to make up that morning. But I am concerned about that and what that does for us going forward, especially also in the afternoon when we do have to house those students in the afternoon and make sure that we are giving them snacks, we are making time for them to get some of that work done. But it is impacting us throughout the school day.
Hello, Caroline Goddard, Principal, Anthony Burns Elementary.
And Kim Austin, Principal of Kate Waller Barrett Elementary. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you. I will say to you that, much like our colleagues, we're experiencing the same challenges. Right now, I have 10 routes at Barrett and seven of them have unassigned drivers. So it does greatly impact instruction. Right now, I have four buses that arrive after the 8:15 start time, two of which are more than a half hour late. They can arrive anywhere from 30 to 40 minutes late every single day since the start of school. So it does greatly impact students. I think Scott spoke to the importance of routines and with the population that we serve, it's really paramount that they're at school on time. Not only does it impact instruction and students, but I have an entire grade level that is not able to have planning time every single day because the planning is first thing in the morning, but we have kids that keep arriving during that 40 minutes of their planning.
So I also have 10 routes and I have six unassigned routes. So that does create late students. I have two that are predominantly late, almost every day, about 15 minutes, which affects our routine setting, just to repeat kind of what you've been hearing. It also affects like our morning meetings and our responsive classroom implementation as well. We do have a grab-and-go breakfast to make sure every child gets fed every morning. But our first encore or specials rotation will start at 8:35 and that's when the first, that last bus is rolling in most of the time. So the teachers have to wait to receive them, make sure they get to the right encore. So it does impact not just their academics, but also their extracurriculars as well when they're doing those encore rotations. And I look forward to possibly some solutions. Maybe the 15 minutes will help. I'd love to give it a try because we also are having buses in the afternoon who are coming from other shift-two schools to my school. So we dismiss at 2:25 and my last bus arrived today at 3:32. So that's because they're waiting for other shifts as well.
And that's pretty consistent throughout the week with that. I will tell you, there are drivers that have, they're involved with the zero start. So if they're serving governor's school, then they're coming and doing double runs for us. So their very first run doesn't get to us till 15 minutes after school starts. Then they have to go get another route as well. So there are huge implications. I do believe 15 minutes, although it doesn't seem like a lot. I do believe that there's hope in freeing up other drivers, that they'll be able to come and support our school so that our kids can be to school on time. And it absolutely is an equity issue with giving our kids access to instructional time.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for coming in. Ms. Healy.
I'd like to make a request that we get a list of the unassigned routes and, you know, what schools those routes are unassigned and, you know, where the latest new hire buses have been assigned to. It's interesting because when I'm looking at this analysis, I guess they weren't talking about last Thursday when they, you know, talked about the buses because Mrs. Austin said she had two buses that are 30 minutes or more late. And according to the analysis last Thursday, there were only two in the whole elementary. And I'm assuming that's first and second tier, if that's, that's correct. So I want more data. This just, this doesn't do it for me. I want to, I want to see more data. But this is...
Before the buses get to school?
Okay, hold on. What I didn't hear discussed, and of course it wasn't asked, is how the teachers feel about this. Because I'm getting a very different perspective from teachers. Not because they don't love their kids and want to do everything they can to help their kids, but because they have families as well and responsibilities. And how this extra, we're calling it an extra 15 minutes. It might be 15 minutes on the first tier, but it adds up as we go along and it's at least 25 minutes by the time we get to high school. So that's just another factor that I think needs to go into the equation here.
Dr. Warner.
I just, I've listened to, and I appreciate our principals who came in to tell us what their experience is. My concern is that we have too many kids late for school. And I think that we can't really spend a lot of time debating about this and dragging this out for weeks at a time to see what might be the solution. It sounds like if there's anything that impacts traffic, like a storm or anything else, it sends us back further and we have more delays. You know, we were told in May that we needed 45 minutes between the runs. That was kind of the schedule that we were told. And we pushed that and we aren't, you know, things are not working. And I agree, teachers do have, are facing a lot of dilemmas because their, schools are running an hour later. In the afternoon, our late times are even worse than they are in the morning. So teachers are left... So teachers are left having to stay at school longer because the students aren't able to leave, you know? And it's impacted certainly by the shortage of drivers. It certainly is. But these transportation issues aren't singularly school issues. They're also Stafford issues. And, you know, I think that this is a very quick fix that we could put in place relatively soon. We could do this. I'm concerned about waiting longer and letting students being late longer, and let them miss classes longer, and have more time that they have to make up, and more lessons that teachers have to plan for to help them reach where they are. Not only did we push the schedule and squeeze that forty-five minutes down to thirty, but we also took the opt, we had the opt-out instead of just having opt-in, forcing, you know, parents to acknowledge whether they wanted the bus or not. We are not going to quickly address this bus shortage, the bus driver shortage, because it's nationwide. We are doing the best we can, I think. But there are all sorts of transportation issues that we need to address. We don't have enough buses, we don't have enough drivers, we don't have enough fleet services, we're having a hard time with maintenance. We have one refueling station, I think. There are a whole plethora of issues that are going to have to be addressed, but changing the time schedule, I think, is one that we can do quickly.
Ms. Hallerback.
All right. I guess my question is to those that, to the principals who came. I can tell you, I am getting from your staff upset about this change, that they feel they are pushed to the end, that they are burnt out. I know you all are burnt out. This has been extremely difficult. The other people who are burnt out are our students with stress of weathering at school, and also with our parents. My biggest fear as we move forward is as we begin to study this, because we've only started to study it. I mean, we just started last week. If we come back with yet another change, and another change, and another change, I can't, that's very hard for me to say to our parents, who I talk to a lot. And I think they have given grace, but I am very concerned if this fifteen minutes, and we say it's going to make a big change, I don't see it based on what I was told tonight. We need fifty drivers. We have, how many that you said were unassigned routes? I'm fearful we're not making progress at this point. That I am actually concerned of tinkering with anything at this point because we don't seem to know what we need and how best to get there. I can speak. I have had parents, I will say on both sides of this, contact me, who said, "Look, my kid's going to be there at these later times anyway because nobody ever comes to get him." And so, that, you know, makes me unhappy. I also have lots of concern from drivers and others. I don't want to make a decision that's going to make sure also that our teachers are either more stressed about their home life. So I got to tell you, I'm not sure how I feel. I am conflicted both ways because I'm very afraid of tinkering with something that then in two more weeks, we're going to have some new answer and something else, and to tinker with it again. I'm just in a quandary. I'm saying it honestly because the emails I have go both ways, but most of them, once I got down to, when they got to this issue, not a different issue, was they want the best for kids, but they also realize that their kids have a life outside of school. And I am not one that is always driven by extracurricular and stuff, but I do know our kids need some of those extra things. And that has been a real challenge to me in terms of trying to say how they can accomplish these things when we started the year with certain times, then our community rallied around those times and set schedules, set other things. I understand that education should be paramount. I am certainly not disputing that, but I do believe we are looking for the well-balanced child as well, student and family. So I will say I'm conflicted, and I will say the pleas to the teachers who wrote me and said, "This may be it, I just can't keep changing," leaves me very, very concerned. Those are my comments. Sure, Ms. Randall.
This also has me conflicted because we took the idea of switching the times of elementary and high school as a solution for learning and transportation, and that didn't work out so well. We added a fourth tier. That's not working out so well. Our hours are getting longer, our rides are not getting much better as we have similarly plateaued. We have teachers, mostly, you know, I understand the window of protection at the elementary school, but I look at the high schools as they're preparing to make learning, social, and even future career, learning, and service decisions. Teachers as sponsors and coaches, and even our drivers, are critical components and proponents of our students and their successes in and out of the classroom. This change that is being proposed now, I feel, was not adequately run by our staff, our drivers. I think we all can agree that how it rolled out was not spectacular. Nor does it help our families who are trying to balance so many balls in the air right now. The many moving parts of high schools seem to be, have been critically impaired. We were told we would have dedicated buses for our activities, even more of them, and that hasn't happened. We were assured of a lot of things for the high school level, which has not happened even close. CGS has an advantage if they choose to take in a zero class, another class in a day that can help them with their grade difference for class rank, college acceptance, scholarships over other non-CGS students. Other, some other non-CGS students may want to take an advantage of another class to graduate early, or may would like to start their day even earlier so they have to, because they have to work, but they don't have that option. This was something that happened to CGS students outside of Stafford County because of other time challenges with the other schools involved. Clubs, activities, and sports, trying to get their early morning options in, are now being told no in some cases. I think we need to get out of the way and allow them to happen however they need to happen. Because in prior years, they did have a. My son was involved in morning meetings and sports. You know, in talking to teachers, one of the things they did not want was concurrent teaching. Now they're concurrently teaching, they're recording their teaching, they're being flexible, and they're shifting their contract hours with less than two weeks' notice. I just don't find that okay. We have a, I don't feel, I know we have a diverse community of rural, suburban, urban, with zero consistent feeder patterns with our schools, yet we quoted other school districts that had switched these times, but they don't have the same subdivisions or living environments that we do. I'm still very concerned, and I feel like a reasonable solution is to look at that fourth-tier option. As Ms. Young was alluding to, it was important and imperative for Park Ridge and Winding Creek, but I'm not sure a district-wide change was necessary. But I don't know because when we were proposed the forty-five minutes in May, we were also told that the thirty minutes would be just fine. When we were told in May, we were told we needed thirty drivers. In August, we were told forty drivers, and tonight, fifty. So, I mean, I understand, you know, people are leaving and things like that are changing, but it's very hard to make decisions when the data keeps moving, it changes, and, you know, like I said, the, having a meeting on Tuesday and getting this hot, put to us on Wednesday with no mention is just, it's very hard. And I feel for the parents and the teachers that are writing us because this has been a lot, a lot. And I don't, I don't know that I can necessarily wholeheartedly agree that a fifteen-minute move is going to make, I'm still waiting, we've been told route consolidations for weeks, and I don't know when will that be done so that we can even see what that impact is. So I definitely have some concerns. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Oh, it's Ms. Healy.
Well, first, I want to thank you, Ms. Hazard, for setting this meeting up. As soon as I got the notice on Wednesday, started hearing from staff, from parents, from students, I knew we had to talk about this because I know we have a responsibility. And yes, we need to get the kids to school on time, but we can't address the problem until we know where it is. And we have these numbers, but it doesn't tell me where the problem is, and how can we address the problem? If there's certain routes that are always late, then we need to focus on them. It sounds like we're just now starting to drill down. I mean, we're six-plus weeks into school, and we're finally starting to analyze this data? So I'm not willing to dictate a change that's going to affect thirty thousand students, our staff, families, without a substantive basis. And there are, there certainly is no guarantee. I could guarantee you that this isn't going to stop. It's not going to solve the problem. Even Dr. Jones, when he sent us the memo, said this is not going to resolve the problem. This is not going to get all the students to school on time. So I, there's just no way I can support this at this point. If we come back with more data, I think we need to look into other potential alternatives. I applaud, you know, the charter buses, assuming that they're safe and, you know, reasonable. If that works out, perhaps we need some more of them, and perhaps that will help. There may be other things we can do. One thing I would like to ask, to look into, is to cut the blocks by five minutes a day. Now, if I did the math close, it sounds like we could be five minutes a day for three blocks, not lunch. Don't want to cut lunch. At fifteen minutes a day, that means if we saved fifteen minutes a day, leaving the bus schedules as they are now, still picking the students up, getting to school on time, students would be there hopefully fifteen minutes early. They could get their lunch, they could get ready for class, but we wouldn't have those numbers of people that are fifteen minutes or less late. Now, I know this can't go on indefinitely, but we could take a whole month of fifteen minutes a day and take off one school day. With our inclement weather, I know we have a reserve in terms of minutes. We have opportunities now on bad weather days to, you know, do some asynchronous, I think I got that word right, you know, instruction. I mean, I think it would be worthwhile to look into that. At least we would take care of that first column and focus on the second ones. You know, the, and I'm very concerned about people that are an hour late. To me, that's just untenable. But I don't know where they are, I don't know what we can suggest. And we have a community that has reached out. Last year, when we were meeting at Shirley High, parents came and said, "I'll drive my kids to school. You know, if you open school, I'll get them there." Maybe it's something we need to ask for some help. But there's, until we know exactly where those problems are, I don't think we're going to be able to address them. But that's, you know, my request is, can we do that? At least it would resolve a significant part of this. It's not long-term, but I'd say for the next month. Five minutes a day. We've done it before, when we've added on, I don't know if we could take off.
Ma'am Chair, do you want me to speak to instructional hours?
Sure.
So, I know, and I believe Dr. Nichols probably done some calculations, but the initial plan on May eleventh that was rolled out, what the elementary and middle school day would have been six hours and thirty minutes, and the high school day would have been six hours and twenty-five minutes. Our current schedule is six hours and ten minutes. We have to have, by state requirement, we have to have at least six hundred and eighty hours of core instruction at the elementary level. I believe that's right, Ms. Neely. We have to have five hundred and sixty hours of core instruction at the middle school level. So any further cuts is going to jeopardize our ability to meet the state requirements for instructional hours, particularly if we have inclement weather. In terms of asynchronous learning, there was a Supers memo that came out several weeks ago where we essentially have ten days of asynchronous learning. I can't remember all of it, but we have ten days. That's kind of our window of asynchronous learning for the year without having to request a waiver for the state, from the state.
All right.
And Dr. Nichols, I don't know if you have more exact information, but I think I've at least spoken to the minimum requirement set by the state.
How many increment weather days are built into our calendar?
Dr. Nichols would have to address that.
Evening, men chair, school board members. Dr. Jones. Right now, we built the calendar on a hundred and seventy-nine days. So in order to meet the state requirement, we have to at least have nine hundred and ninety hours. Right now, we probably have approximately a hundred and twenty hours over. So do we have time building our schedule for snow? Yes. I can get you those specific numbers, but off the top of my head, that's what I recall at this moment in time.
So there's a hundred and twenty hours that we have to meet emergencies, or if we're
Give or take, yes, ma'am.
if we're out of school. So if we miss six hours, that would take, what, five percent of that hundred and twenty for the year?
The state requires that you have at least five and a half hours per day of instructional time. We currently have six hours and ten minutes in our school day, but again, that takes, we cannot count lunch, and that's at least twenty-five minutes, twenty, twenty-five minutes, depending on how you look at it, or thirty minutes if the time you leave class to get to lunch, twenty minutes at lunch, and five minutes to go back to lunch, depending on what level you're at. So we are, we are close to that minimum.
Fifteen minutes is, fifteen minutes, five and a half, from five and a half plus twenty-five, subtract it from six, ten?
About ten minutes.
Just about fifteen minutes?
Ten.
Ten minutes. Close enough.
Dr. Chase.
Thank you. Yeah, so for me, what I heard last spring, just like Ms. Healy, was parents saying that they really, really, really wanted their children in school. I have the unique perspective at the moment on this board that I actually teach in the classroom, and I taught today in my classroom. And in-person teaching is huge, and it is so wonderful to be back in the classroom with my students. Last week, I had my students make a human model of the neuron. Last week, my students got to hold a real human brain. We can't do that virtually. And so, when I hear principals talking to me about equity and the fact that some students are getting an entire day of school, and some students are not getting an entire day of school, that's a real concern for me. And we got a lot of emails, and I... And I know, you know, I've been to Brookpoint when they're getting that get out the vote drive going or getting people registered to vote, and so I know that's a really active school. But there was one letter that really struck out to me, and this letter was from Stafford High School, from a student there. And the letter said, "Dear Dr. Jones and members of the board, I am a freshman at Stafford High School, and I think this is the best choice," meaning the time change. "I have seven brothers, and my mom has to wake everybody up for school. Most of the time, the bus doesn't come at all or comes very late. That means she has to wait to see if the bus arrives on time. Then she has to take all of us to school, and we usually get to school late. She can't always do this. She has some kids at home that need to be watched. What I'm basically saying is my mom can't always take me to school. The schools should be able to bring me to school. I agree with you with making schools start later if this means buses will actually show up." So I, I understand, and this is so hard, so hard for everybody up here, so hard, that, that we're having to make choices, and it's what's so hard about this job, making choices between a child being able to participate in extracurricular activities, a child actually getting a school day in person, a child having a licensed math teacher. These are really hard choices that we make. And, and it's a good thing that there are seven of us because we don't always agree, but I know we all really do care a lot about the children of Stafford County. It worries me that the, that the time change isn't going to guarantee everybody. I'm just, we'll get to school on time. My hope is that the time change plus additional buses coming on board will get us closer to that. It's really hard for me to think about students missing in-person instruction after a year and a half of really not having it. And it's really hard for me to think about what we're asking our teachers to do. It is hard to teach when students are coming in 15, 20, 30, 40 minutes late. And we've all talked about the learning loss of this pandemic and how we're going to recover from that learning loss. And I think it's cavalier to say that, for principals to come up and tell me they're going to find a way. Well, maybe they're going to find a way, but it's going to be pretty hard if a student is missing their algebra class every single morning and then they take an SOL. And, and so I'm just worried about how we get this fixed quickly. Thanks.
All right. Board members, we are going to take a five-minute break. We've all been sitting for a long time. Remember not to congregate. So a five-minute break for everybody, and we will resume. We are back in session. I believe we have everybody here. So we have had our discussion. Are there any other questions? Are, for Dr. Jones or for staff? Any, can, any updates? Any final questions?
Yes.
So here we are trying to figure out what we need to do. Staff brought us this. Is this still what you think is going to help to fix the problem? Or is this, how confident are you that this will help and to what degree will it help?
So I wish that there was a magic decision that would fix everything, like we all do. Unfortunately, this is a very complex problem. And so I think we have brought you the best available data we have available to us at the moment. So I, I think of this as really five, five things. The board has already taken action on a pay scale, which has made a huge impact on us attracting drivers, and we thank you for that. We know that hiring drivers is indeed a solution, but it's slow. We know that supplemental transportation is a short-term solution that will help alleviate how we use our existing resources in terms of how we deploy buses. We know the consolidating routes will also make a difference, but it's slow. And then the final strategy is adjusting time. So I feel like, given where we are, you have somewhat of a comprehensive approach, but you still don't have everything you need. So I think collectively, those things are going to make a big difference. You have some data that suggests that while this may not be a permanent fix, it will indeed make a difference in the number of kids getting to school every single day. So I would make my decision based on that. I think you have the best available data, but you certainly need more going forward. And we have a plan to be able to bring additional data to you as we go forward.
Dr. Jones, can I ask a question? Would you consider, or do you think staff could consider, a little bit extra time? Because I have gotten a lot from staff of a, and from parents, saying even this 35 minutes is an impact to their family for them to react. I am not trying to minimize that I don't want kids in school, but I'm also hearing impacts and things that need, need to, to change, for people to plan. And also, I really would love myself two more weeks with all these great strategies that we are trying to do. I would myself like to see if one through four could get us a little farther before we impact every family in the division. I'm just being upfront. That's what I would like to see. If there is some way we could look to, I mean, a week is next, I know is next Tuesday. I don't think that's a sufficient amount of, of time for staff. But I am sensitive to the comments that I'm receiving of, "Oh, my gosh, I have to make plans or my current..." I, I'm just sensitive to that. So I, I just feel like I have to ask your comment on that.
Well, I think certainly one of the things I've learned, and I know I've had lots of conversations with our, with our staff about this. And one of the real challenges, and challenges in Stafford is out-of-school time, childcare, et cetera. Those are real issues. Again, no quick fixes for those. But I think as we go into the budget season, certainly that's something we need to think about in terms of how we provide that kind of support to our staff as yet another strategy. You know, I serve the pleasure of the board. So I brought a recommendation to the board that I think will make a, make some change in the short term. We're going to, I respect whatever decision you make in terms of time. But I think, I think it's abundantly clear to all of us that it's going to take a multitude of strategies to, to, to address this, so.
Because my concern is, as we have heard, all these unassigned bus routes are not going to be fixed in a week, two week, maybe even four weeks. But I am concerned that if we do not see some measurable impact, we have really put upon our families who have the confidence that we are trying to do the right thing. I feel like what, I want to make sure if we do this or if in the future we look at that one of these consultants comes up with something that really works, I would like to, to do it. I, I just, change is difficult and not knowing is, is also difficult. And that is a real struggle for me with our families that as we are gathering more data and getting more, we may come up with better solutions, and then we have to send out something new. That is, I have to say, of concern to me.
Final comment is, if you, if you want to know what keeps me up at night, it's, it's this. We're coming out of a pandemic. Kids desperately need to be in school. We've already induced our instructional day. That keeps me up at night, especially as we think about our performance overall as a system and, and whether or not we're really meeting the needs of students. So I, you know, for me personally, I'd rather make a decision in the short term that's going to have some impact and then continue to look at the data and, and adjust going forward, which I think is what the board is already considering.
Can I speak?
Sure. Ms. John.
One of the, I don't know if this is a question or not, but, you know, I, I care about all students and some parents can make accommodations and, and some can pivot as fast. And so one of the parents' questions that came up and a teacher's question that came up is having YMCA slots open, which are not open at this time. And I remember during COVID that we helped ensure that there were more slots open. So I was wondering, was that something you were considering or something that we could work on, especially for those parents that I know? One that Dr. Chase has described may, may not have a job because she has to go back and forth. And I know you mentioned about these parents that are trying to help, Ms. Healy, in terms of parents that said to us, "Hey, we're here to help." So I, I, I want to see where these parents are that said that they, they want to help us also. Because like I said, this is a crisis and this is our community, and we just need to work together to ensure that all of these children get to school timely. So if we could look into the YMCA and making sure that teachers, as well as parents that have to, in case we decide that this time is, is warranted. And if you all cannot see and look at that 15 minutes that I discussed earlier, where I, I know that Ms. Healy, she finds all kinds of things, but I basically asked for 15 because I'm concerned about the, the elementary kids being in the dark. I was just wondering if those, the two staggering times to be looked at, especially for those elementary in the morning, that's my concern. especially for those elementary in the morning, that's my concern, being out there so early. But definitely making sure that all kids, regardless of status and zip code, could be in school to learn. And that's what we're here for, for the students.
Ms. Randall?
I wanted to ask, I mentioned this, but I really don't know the answer. Do we have, I imagine it's a process of getting drivers and what have you, but also getting information about how many kids are on a bus? But how many routes have we consolidated as like a yay, we did this? And how many do we still have to, or when will that be done?
I know that's a dynamic number because bus routes change as child, children decide to ride or not ride the bus.
Correct, correct. This is a number that we've been working on, or this scenario we've been working on since last week. And so, we still have a directive to be able to share something with you before the end of the week in terms of the total number of routes that we've consolidated from the time we started this until our deadline for this process. So, that is a number that we've been working on and we will be able to share that out to you.
I think that would be a very important piece because like you said, we're doing, we do layered approaches for mitigation strategies for COVID. But I would also like to think that we're doing a layered approach to solving the transportation. And although driver is a slow one, consolidating, you know, routes could be helpful, you know? And like, I kind of still think that maybe lessening the number of schools that are on a tier two so that we can get started on our middle school runs a little earlier. I don't know. I'm just suggesting that, but I know it's a matter of drivers and unassigned routes and, you know, it's a much more complicated puzzle piece than I have the brain power for. But I am just saying that I just wonder if, you know, in a layered approach, if that wouldn't be helpful. But I'm also curious to see what kind of a dent the consolidation does to the puzzle as well. Thank you.
Ms. Healy?
I'm still not giving up yet on my 15 minutes. No, seriously, look at it. Look at that column. And I didn't even know it was going to be there because we just saw it tonight. But the number of routes that are 15 minutes or less late, the principals are saying, if they're late, they're even later because they get breakfast, they have to come in. If we took five hours out of our 120 hours of what I'll call the reserve, we could get through four weeks of school. So, 15 minutes a day times, five days a week times four. Approximately five hours.
Are you talking about my 15 minutes?
Sure, it can be your 15 minutes. I'm talking about the 15 minutes these buses are late. It's not ideal, but if we can do that, then we can, number one, take some of the pressure off the schools that are trying to get these kids run through. The kids would have a little break for 15 minutes, at least the ones that are there. The ones that are getting there less than 15 minutes late won't be late. I know this can't go on, you know, for an indefinite period of time, but for one month, and we could start this on the 27th, one month, one month, we should have a lot of these bus drivers and they'll say drop out. We should have a significant number of new bus drivers because we've got the August ones. We've got the September classes started. And these 72 that sign letters of intent, I don't know how many of those have CDLs already, but I'm assuming some of them may have CDLs. So, let's see where we are. I'm just, I'm not willing to disrupt so many lives of our families, our students, our staff, our bus drivers, our teachers. Somebody wrote and said, this is a straw that broke the camel's back. I would never, I'm paraphrasing, not straw that broke the camel's back, but I've never written to the school board before. But I can't take it. This is too much. And I particularly liked the one that said, are you insane? Like, oh, it feels like this sometimes, you know, sitting here. But, but we have got, we've got, we've got to weigh it. And I know, you know, we may have different balances, we may have different scales. But on my scale, the negative impact is much more severe. If this had come to us at the beginning of the school year, before we started and we were told this is going to make a big difference, I would, I would most likely look at it differently. But this is not the beginning of the school year. People have changed their lives to accommodate us. And now we're asking them to change again when we can't guarantee the problem's going to get fixed. So, I, I'm not going to support the change, but I would like to change the school day by making it 15 minutes shorter for four weeks, starting next week, and reassess. See where we are and we'll have more data. And I really believe, once we get that data and we know where these issues are, if we know who's, who's an hour late and we can figure out why they're an hour late and how we can get them to school quicker.
Doctor Warner.
You know, we, we need to do work. But anyway, I'm, if y'all say no, then that's it. But that's my, that's my plea. Five hours out of 120 hours and we can have a significant number of students on time. We'd be taking in the high schools, five minutes out of three blocks. And these are what, 80-minute classes for, for one month? That's it.
Well, I'm just going to say that, first of all, we did know at the beginning of the year. We knew May 11th. That's what we were told. This schedule announcement is very similar to that. But this is a multifaceted problem. And one thing I would like to say is that our staff and our administrators and our teachers are working really hard. And I know parents are angry and frustrated because we're angry and frustrated too. Everybody wanted this year to be great because the kids have been out of school for so long. We've had three years disrupted by COVID and it's taken a toll on this entire community. That is a given. But please, please do not, do not take it out on the administrators at your kid's school. It's not their fault. It's, it's just, we're working on it. We have been working on it. I, I think this is a quick solution that gives us an opportunity to get the kids, more kids back to school on time. And I think that, that's where my concern is, is the kids that are missing these first classes. And I do think that the problems we have are not just the time. It's the traffic. It's the shortage of buses. It's the shortage of bus drivers. It's fleet services. It's all sorts of things that have been building for years. And we have got to address them. We have got to. Because now I think we're paying the toll for this. And our students are paying the toll for this.
All right. Anyone else? No. Dr. Chase?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm, yeah, it's quite the quandary. I mean, I'm not sure that 15 minutes taken out of high school is the same as the 45 minutes that we are going to get by, by changing the schedule. Yeah, so I'm just really, and, and I do, I do agree with Ms. Healy about the hardship to families. But I'm also thinking about the kids who are, the families that are quietly having their children miss school, substantial amounts of school every day. And it's been going on for six weeks. And now we're talking about maybe doing it for another four weeks. And, and if, if you're in high school and you're taking a semester-long class, that's over half of the course. I mean, if that's algebra, you missed half your algebra classes. So, it's, I, yeah, I, I feel like staff is bringing us their, their request for the, or not even, their, their solution. And, and here we are going to nickel and dime them down again. And, and we're going to end up back here in a month. I mean, we're probably going to end up back here in a month anyway. So, yeah, I, I, I'm willing to entertain the idea of, of moving forward with the plan that staff has brought.
Why don't you move this till seven o'clock at night?
Stop. Excuse me.
Don't tell me to stop. I'm like, this thing you're listening to is full of shit morale.
Excuse, sir, you can please leave, please leave. The, the. They are.
The recall.
The, it was. All right. Well, as I have, as I've indicated and what I've asked Dr. Jones, and I understand the immediacy, a lot of my neighborhoods. But what I did hear from the people that have written to me is it's getting better. They have said, it is getting better. And I am concerned that we set up an expectation that this is going to solve it and it is not. And for right now, the impact on all those families is is distressing to me. Because I have had teachers and others who just feel overwhelmed and unprepared. I would prefer to delay this two weeks, partly because I'm not sure I've heard from, I have heard from a lot of people, but I also think they need time to, to prepare. That is something I just keep hearing is, it's a huge change to me. And as Ms. Young and others have indicated, some people can react quickly and others cannot. I don't want to lose teachers, parents, or any professional in our school system right now because of an inability to react to this. I am not saying that the 15 minutes is not potentially going to be helpful, but we have heard tonight, we are looking for 50 drivers. And we heard how many are unassigned. And those are not going to be assigned in the next two weeks. However, in two weeks, we may have some data back from these outside consultants who may say, hey, here's what it is. Maybe we don't have to move at 15. Maybe it can be less. Maybe it can be something different. And it is not because I don't value the work that has been done. We are in a hole and we know it and we are trying to do the best. But I also feel that part of what we have to do is balance. And the balance here is really tough for me this time. It is one of the toughest ones I've ever had on this board, to be honest. And for me, I need to give some of those people who pleaded with me some time to make their decisions. Or give them time to plan. So, to me, this is, this could come back to the board, but with a very strong, that it will not be implemented on the 27th because that is really going to be here within a week. And, sorry, by, and I just feel like if there's a way we can maybe tighten it, that it isn't quite as much of the impact, we don't know. I hope that, but if, if what you all come back with as staff is, there is no other way, I will feel better with that. But we are calling in additional experts. We're calling in our own smart staff to start looking at these numbers. But everybody has said, we just started. I don't know.
Yeah, so I guess my question is, we're saying that, that the announcement that, that Dr. Jones sent out last week, and, and yes, I would have liked more, you know, more, more of a, of a heads up. And we're saying that, that two weeks is not enough time to ask people to prepare. And then we're saying, but maybe in two weeks, we're going to find a different solution. So, will people be preparing or in two weeks or a month, will we end up saying it's going to be in two weeks? So, I, I think we have to be clear about what we're asking families to do or not. Do you see what I'm saying?
I'm trying to look at a calendar and I've been trying to look.
Dr. Chase, I agree with you. But my solution is get these bus drivers onboard. And it sounds like that's not that far away. Mr. Baldwin said four to six weeks in the process. We've got a number that have already been in the process for at least close to four weeks. We've got another 30, what, 50 coming in the pipeline. So, I would like to just let this thing, in the words of one of the emails I got, see if it works itself out and move forward. I don't want this hanging over anybody's head. I, I think that's, that's very unfair to people. I mean, the students that are writing in saying, I'm going to lose my after-school job. I'm already going in late. I can't ask my boss to let me come in any later. I mean, that's, people, people need to, to move on. And, and I have to say, note that, Dr. Warner, we were not told in May, this is not going to work and this is going to fail and you're going to have all these buses late. We were told, we'll work it out. We didn't find out until school started that there was a problem. That's when I found out, first day of school, that we didn't have assigned buses, that we didn't have, you know, we didn't have it covered. So, to say that we knew in May, you may have known something, but I sure didn't. Because I took the superintendent, the former superintendent's word that it would be worked out. But then when you turn the clocks all the way back, I think you all know I did not even support the whole switcheroo, you know, to move elementary first. But that was supposed to solve the problem. So, we've been told along the road, this is going to solve the problem. I appreciate Dr. Jones saying, this is not going to completely solve the problem. At least, you know, he's been forthcoming in telling us, this will help, but it's not going to solve the problem. So, I, I'm not in favor of saying we're going to relook at this in two weeks. I think that there's already too much stress on everybody. It's on, you know, start with the students, look at the parents and the staff, the bus drivers. You know, how can people move on if they've got this hanging over their heads?
All right. Well, any other comments or suggestions for moving forward this evening? All right. Will there, is there a, I guess, motion or no motion at all this evening? I'm open for suggestions. All right.
Madam Chairman, I do not want to see, I do not want to see this, this schedule change implemented next Monday. And if, if it's appropriate to make a motion in that regard, I would make that motion. I know it's a superintendent's decision, but that is certainly my position as a member of the, the school board.
And I would second that.
All right. Is there any further discussion regarding, I guess, to direct the superintendent? Is, let's see, it'd be to direct the superintendent to, I guess it's not delay, yours is to completely eliminate.
To rescind would perhaps be the proper word.
All right. So, that would be to rescind completely the September 27th implementation date of the additional 15 minutes. Is that correct?
That is.
All right.
And I don't see any support for my starting school. And I, I don't see any support for my starting school fifteen minutes later, but leaving the bus schedules the way they are, so the students, as Dr. Chase is so concerned about them being in class. If we, for the next month, started school, started the, started the classes fifteen minutes later, then we would eliminate for the next month a significant number of what is now a late arrival, and it would cost us five hours of our, yeah, our, our bank time, we used to call it.
I'm in favor of anything that gets students more instructional time. Yeah.
Okay, well, then, then I, if, if, am I, is this a motion? I'm not sure we can, we can, I assume we can direct the superintendent, but.
So you have a motion on the table right now.
Okay, well, then, could I amend that a motion to?
I could put the amendment, I could.
Oh, okay. Well, you want to make the amendment?
Yeah, so I.
Yep.
I will put a motion to keep the schedule as is and see if we could find the fifteen minutes to have the elementary school remain the same and the schedule to stay the same, but that the kids would have be on time. So would that be keeping the schedule?
Well, the, the bus schedule would remain the same, but the bell schedule would be fifteen minutes later.
Okay, that would be the second one.
So the, the, the bus will come pick the students up at the same time, because if the bus doesn't pick the students up at the same time, we're not saving any time. But if the school day starts, say the school day starts now at, I'm going to use the high school, at nine thirty, what time does high school start today?
If I'm doing my math correctly, Ms. Healy, what you're proposing is elementary shift one would begin at eight. Elementary shift two would begin at eight thirty. Middle school and early childhood would begin at nine, and the high school would begin at nine thirty-five. Is that, I'm going to ask my staff.
But, but I'm not suggesting that the buses come any later, that the buses.
That's clear to me. I just want to make sure that bell schedule is clear.
The buses come the same time. So hypothetically, that big column, those, all those numbers of students that are fifteen minutes or less late, if we started the clock fifteen minutes later, but we got them to school the same time they're getting to school now, then they would not be late. No, that doesn't. I don't know, it's, it's crystal clear to me, but.
Go ahead, Mr..
Can I just propose, good evening, since I haven't seen you yet this evening. Can I just propose, it sounds like there's some support for that, so allow staff to come back and look at that, because we may be able to do some adjustments without changing the bell schedules. If you get into changing the bell schedule at all, that's a, something that needs to be looked at very deeply. And so if you give us some time with secondary staff and, and, I don't actually think we can leave transportation the way it is. We transport and maybe just adjust secondary, the fifteen minutes, or allow that time in the morning, so it stays the same, but you allow time and that flexibility in the morning. But staff would need to explore that.
Will we be able to have that before the 27th, or on the 27th?
On the 28th is our next meeting.
Is that enough time?
Well, so I think so, because it's not, and so this really comes to Dr. Nichols and, and Dr. Greider, but, and, and it might not even be that, and I, and I say this respectfully, that action is needed. That'd be something we can just report to you, hey, this is what we're doing, like the flex time at the beginning of the day, or, or something at the beginning of the day that's adjusted it, so the first block doesn't actually start until fifteen minutes into the day, is how I interpreted Mrs. Healy's comments.
Right, like what we did before, we actually added five or six minutes to each block. Now what I would do is, however you want to work it out, I want those kids that are now fifteen minutes late, when they get to school, they're no longer late, the class is starting fifteen minutes later, however you do that. But I don't want to take it all off the first block. I want to spread it equally.
And that's where it'll take a little bit of time just to build that schedule, and so that's not a decision I think we want to make very quickly tonight.
But that's, we'll get more students there, quote, on time. Now, I, I would, I would only like to do that for a month and then reassess where we are. Because I, I know we have the hundred and twenty hours, it's not going to last forever, but a month would take five hours off of that bank.
It sounds like we are, if we would like to have a report on this, but I believe we would need it next Tuesday on the 28th, correct?
I, I'd last for the report at the, probably the second meeting in October, because that would give us a month to, to see how it's going, and also to see how many more drivers we have, you know, on board.
No.
I, I'm just afraid that if we wait till the second meeting, if we have to make any changes, now we're pushing back those changes another two weeks.
Well, I'm, I'm only talking about the five minutes per block, that's all, not the, not the other.
Automatically revert back to the, to, to the current schedule at, at that timeframe and still not have a decision, possibly.
Yeah, well, we, we'd have more data, we have some more evaluation, we'll have a better basis to make a decision.
September 28th is our next scheduled, next scheduled board meeting on the 28th. I believe that we will need to have an explanation of whether how this would work, and an explanation. I know that it is very clear, it seems to Ms. Healy. I also need to make sure that when staff comes back and does your analysis of the minutes and the times and such like that. I don't want to make that decision myself from the dais tonight. But I would like to direct that we bring back that, that proposal, what it would look like, and at that ti, and in the interim, suspend the implementation of the fifteen minutes proposed on the 27th.
I already had talked about that, I don't want to.
Okay, well, hold on. I, I want to make sure. So confirming the motion on the table and Ms. Hollerbeck, did you? Original, I shouldn't.
But she explained it already, so now.
But Ms. Young has made the substitute motion. I'm just trying, I'm sorry.
A friendly amendment. So that's the only one on the table right now, correct?
It's in order, the substitute or the.
If it's, if it's. Oh, evaluate the potential of starting the first block fifteen minutes later for a limited period of time. You know, but, but that would be independent from not implementing the time frame.
So let me ask you a question. You're rescinding your first one, though, or not?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so let's rescind.
My motion is to not implement the change in the schedules on September 27th, as announced last week by the interim superintendent. That, that is the motion.
Okay, so that's the first motion, and you second it now, right? Okay. No, this is the friendly amendment now, so we, we, we don't have the substitute anymore because. No, 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 no substitute. You already, she already has her first one, that she just amended, and then Ms. Hollerbeck just seconded, so that's the only one on the table right now.
Okay, and so there is the amended motion with the study or an evaluation of the fifteen-minute accommodation. Or some, some word, sorry.
All right.
Do this one here.
And my, so I'm, I'm going to, I don't know, make a supplemental emotion that we. Substitute? Substitute, substitute motion, sorry, supplemental, I knew it says S-word. That we just accept the schedule as proposed by staff and wait on additional information.
I will second, so we can vote. All right, so the substitute is to accept the September 27th new bell times. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
No. Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Hazard?
No.
Ms. Healy?
No.
Ms. Hollerbeck?
No.
Ms. Randall?
No.
Dr. Warner?
Yes.
And Ms. Young? Madam Chair, motion fails.
All right, then we move to the next motion on the table, which is regarding the September 27th with the additional study time. I'm just trying to summarize it. To come back to the board, I would ask next Tuesday, September 28th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Ms. Young, I mean.
Dr. Chase?
No.
Ms. Hazard?
Yes.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Ms. Hollerbeck?
Yes.
Ms. Randall?
Yes.
Dr. Warner?
No.
And Ms. Young?
No.
Madam Chair, motion passes.
All right. All right. Thank you, everyone. I will see everybody tomorrow night. We are adjourned.